Okay. Anything else, logistically, before we get started?
Um, I don't see Mayor Ready. So, um...
Are you here, Mayor Ready?
Oops, hang on.
There was one, um, individual that I listed, I just sent you, that was, we had sent the Zoom link to, but they're actually going to be in-person, so we will have one in-person public comment at, that we know of at the moment.
Are we ready? Kurt?
Yes.
Okay. So, before we officially start our meeting, we'll let Porter get us started with some technical information.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Porter O'Neil, and I'll be facilitating the Zoom video portion of the meeting tonight. With me is Sherri Redeman, City Clerk. She will work alongside Mayor Ananda to facilitate the meeting proceedings. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and public access cable channel 25. During the meeting, please mute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon found in the lower left-hand side of the Zoom menu next to the video icon. Muting your microphone during the meeting will make it easier for everyone to hear. You'll just have to remember to unmute if and when you want to speak. In some cases, I may mute or unmute people as needed to keep quiet during the meeting. Each time you speak, please remember to state your name and title for the benefit of those listening remotely. In the menu, you can also turn off, turn your camera on or off by clicking the video icon. For the purposes of this public meeting, please keep your video on during the meeting. If you're participating by phone, you can click *6 to... Using Zoom, somewhere on your gallery screen, usually in the upper right, you will see a choice to toggle between Speaker and Gallery View. Speaker View shows the active speaker. Gallery View tiles all the meeting participants. And I'll turn it back over to Mayor Ananda.
Thank you, Porter. And I will go ahead and take roll call, and we will officially start the meeting. Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
And I am Mayor Ananda, um, and I know we will get a reminder from Sherri here in a second, but I will, I will remember to state who I am prior to speaking from now on. Sherri, would you go ahead and give us further information on this meeting in particular?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Sherri Redeman, City Clerk, and I'm just going to provide a few reminders to ensure that the provisions of the Kansas Open Meetings Act are met. Commissioners, please remember to state your name and title each time you speak. All motions need to be stated clearly. After a motion is made and seconded, the mayor will call on commissioners individually to provide their vote. Mayor, you will then need to announce whether the motion carried and the count of the vote. Excuse me. Various members of city staff are present via Zoom, and they must also remember to state their name and title each time they speak. Members of the public are allowed to speak to certain agenda items. These items are specifically noted on the meeting agenda. Individuals who signed up in advance to provide public comment remotely will be called upon by name. When you are called on, please unmute your listening device and state your name before speaking. The regular three-minute time limit will apply. The mayor will then call for in-person public comment for those without access to technology options. Staff present will direct you to the podium to speak, following social distancing and safety protocols. The regular three-minute time limit will apply. I want to, again, just remind everyone to please mute yourself when you are not speaking.
Thank you, Sherri. So, our first item on the agenda this evening is the, to approve the agenda, the city commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Are there any changes or modifications that a member of the commission would like to make on this item?
Mayor, this is Commissioner Bowley. I'm concerned about the jail expansion issue on our consent agenda. I believe there's community interest beyond the 400-foot notice area, and that we should defer consideration until it can be included on our regular agenda. I'd also appreciate more time to prepare on this issue.
Mayor Ananda? This is, this is Commissioner Larson, and I would be amenable to have that discussion regarding the deferral of that. I'm interested in that, because I do think we need to have more, a robust conversation with the community. This has been such a hot topic, and it should be a regular agenda item, as far as I'm concerned.
Other commissioners have thoughts on that?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldie. I'm open to, you know, what the commission, the will of the commission, obviously, is put on the consent agenda because of a 10-0 vote from the, um, planning commission, and only, but, again, if the commissioners want more time, I'm, I'm open to it.
Commissioner Shipley, do you have any thoughts on this?
Um, I'm, I'm open to that, too. Uh, yeah, it is a little unusual to me that perhaps that it's not, um, on a regular agenda item, although I understand why, owing to the interest from the public. Just for us to remember that there's other items in the future that the public hasn't, doesn't have, or may have less access to, and I will want to consider those things in the same line.
So, um, the request, then, is to defer item E?
Mayor, if I may, Sir Bowley, Commissioner, I've moved that we approve the agenda, with the exception of item C8E, which will be deferred until it can be considered on our regular agenda.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, this is Commissioner Larson, second. I'm sorry.
This, this is Vice Mayor Finkeldie. Would, would you consider, um, a friendly amendment to that, to put it on our next meeting? I just don't like the idea for the applicant that it is an undetermined amount of time.
I would accept, this Commissioner Bowley, I would accept that friendly amendment.
Okay. So, we have a motion from Commissioner Bowley, a second from Commissioner Larson. Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Finkel, or Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Ananda, aye, so that passes unanimously. So, at this point, item E has been pulled from the consent agenda and deferred. However, uh, Sherri, we had someone signed up for public comment on that item. I just want to make sure that we're properly addressing that.
The commission has the ability to amend the agenda, so...
I guess my question, this is Mayor Ananda again, is more that should we have allowed public comment prior to our vote on that?
We have had other items listed on the agenda that you all have deferred prior to public comment. Perhaps Randy or Tony would want to comment on that if they have any problems with that.
City Attorney Tony Wheeler. Your action was to amend the agenda. It didn't really get to the substance of the issue. The, um, the gentleman is present. He will receive notice tonight that he'll have an opportunity to address the commission at the next, the first meeting in June. So, I don't believe that there is any, any harm in deferring his comment until that time. However, um, you know, the, if the mayor wishes to entertain his comments, um, that'd be fine, but really, the action that you're taking is on the agenda and not on the item itself.
This is Mayor Ananda. Thank you, Tony. I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure we were dotting the t's and crossing the i's. So, we will go ahead and defer that, then. I know that this is on the agenda and not on the item specifically, which is what the public commenter wanted to speak to. I just wanted to make sure we weren't crossing anything that we shouldn't. Okay.
Mayor Ananda? This is Sherri Redeman, City Clerk. I just wanted to also state that we will make sure that we reach out to that individual when this item is rescheduled and get him signed back up to provide comment at that time.
Thank you, Sherri. All right, this is Mayor Ananda, sorry. Okay, so, our second item, and maybe Porter, this gave us an opportunity to have Mayor Ready available, but, um, we are under our recognitions, proclamations, and presentations. We are here to present the results of the 2020 Census Count Friendly Wager between Lawrence, Mayor Jennifer Ananda, and Manhattan Mayor Usheretti.
Uh, this is Porter O'Neil, and I don't see that Mayor Ready is with us, um, so I don't know what happened. But maybe, Mayor, you could just speak to the result and, and let people know about what your video says for their meeting tonight.
Okay, I can do that. Slightly extemporaneous, so give me just one minute. We sent a video to, um, to Manhattan City Commission, which meets at 7:00 PM this evening, and so, we had some overlap. We're not able to show up on theirs, um, because we participated in, and thank you to everyone who participated in, um, the online, or phone, or mail census, um, because Lawrence won that, that event. And as a result of that, Manhattan will be, our Manhattan Mayor, Usheretti, will be wearing a KU jersey at their Manhattan City Commission meeting, and I'm so thankful that, um, I am not wearing a purple jersey this evening, although I do have a bit of purple, uh, in the spirit of conciliation. And so, you know, I, I said to them that I was very pleased to share a video message with them, uh, that I was sorry that I couldn't meet with them via conference, um, thanking the community, of course, for participating, because everyone's participation went up as a result of the challenge. We think that, you know, this is probably the most unique set of circumstances in census history, uh, at least for some time, and, and happily, that competition boosted those counts in both of our towns. Lawrence's numbers remain higher during the friendly wager, um, which is to say that we won, and we can come together now as two great cities who are doing what we can to ensure that our state is well-represented in the census. So, we are still ranked an 11th in the nation for self-response to the 2020 census. There's still time to boost our rankings, to show that Kansas counts, and folks can still go to 2020census.gov to submit their census information. Census operations are starting back up, so census tickers will be reaching out to follow-up with addresses that haven't reported yet throughout the summer. So, um, you know, this is all good practice for our 2030 census. We think we've set the stakes appropriately high. We certainly want to wish Manhattan the best, um, and we hope that there are silver linings as we're moving forward and, um, getting our census count up and to par. So, um, that was the ma, that was essentially the paraphrase of the message that I sent to Mayor Ready, and I certainly do appreciate the fun, uh, that I had, hopefully, our communities had, and, um, we didn't get an NCAA win this year, but, but we, we got this one, and I'm very proud of our community. So, um, I guess that is that, as far as that, that single piece there. We will move ahead, then, to the consent agenda, acknowledging that we have already removed one item from that agenda. Please note that all matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Only those items noted with a yellow highlight, bold print, and italics print are eligible for live public comment, and public will be limited to three minutes for comments. I believe that the only public comment item we had was removed from the consent agenda. The only public comment item we had on the consent agenda was removed from the agenda. Are there any items that a member of the commission would like to remove from the consent agenda that hasn't been ready?
Mayor, this is Commissioner Larson. I would like to pull item six, number, item C6A, about the rock salt.
Okay. Any other items? Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Larson, I approve to, I, I move to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item C6A.
This is Commissioner Bowley, second.
We have a motion, this is Mayor Ananda, we have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Commissioner Bowley. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Aye.
Ananda, aye. That passes unanimously. We will now move on to item C6A.
Right. This is, yeah, this is Commissioner Larson. Thank you very much, Mayor. I pulled this item, because I just wanted to make a, a couple of notations on it and maybe ask staff to provide some, some comments on it. Uh, when I was reading through the memo, I noticed that, um, this is a typical purchase for us once a year, to buy salt for next winter's operations for snow and ice, and I know we had just a real brief discussion, um, either last year or early this year, regarding the use of possibly some, um, environmentally-friendly-type materials, starting to look at that, and I noticed that there was a paragraph in the memo that basically, discussed that, indicating that the general rock salt alternatives are, they're being reviewed with consideration regarding environmental and economic impacts. So, I just wanted to know from staff where we are with that and how we can get these types of common items that we have to purchase, purchase more along the line of being environmentally-friendly. And in addition, I think it also might be just a good time to briefly, um, talk about level of service we're going to potentially expect, or how that's going to be handled for next winter.
Mayor, this is Brandon McGuire, Assistant City Manager. I'd call on either Mike Lawless or Dave Wagner to comment in response to Commissioner Larson's props.
Uh, yes, this is Mike Lawless, Municipal Services and Operations Deputy Director. I just couldn't get my, um, mic to unmute there, sorry about that. So, yeah, we, we did have a, a conversation about that, um, this afternoon, and, and I think, just a little bit of background, um, you know, we've, uh, once the MSO was formed, we started to, uh, put together data collection on our different operations, including the snow operation, in terms of, um, you know, how much salt and sand that we used, um, to start that kind of data collection, so that we could, um, have good information to present to, uh, the commission and the public on the operation that we do in terms of how much material are we depositing, um, what does it cost us, how much do we spend, how much time do we spend, how much equipment do we use? And in, in the course of putting that together, um, you know, the, uh, I think beet juice has kind of been one of those, um, other items or other tools that can be used to help, um, in, uh, snow operations. And so, that's, you know, one of the things that we started to look at is, you know, what is the environmental impact of our snow operation? And, you know, to be honest, we really don't have any good information on the, the local streams in terms of, uh, the chloride impact to that. And so, one of the things that we've done is we've put a, a program in place, um, to start monitoring, um, this summer, in terms of kind of a baseline of what we see in the streams, and then, as we go through a winter, uh, snow operation, um, how does that change, and what does the data look like? You know, we're also looking at, um, procuring some of the beet juice, um, to use as a trial, to see how that works, um, with the salt, um, as a pre-wetting agent, um, whether we might mix that with the brine solution, um, and see what kind of, uh, results that we get with that. A couple of things to keep in mind, um, on the environmental side. So, right now, the Kansas River, um, does not have, uh, a maximum daily load for chloride, but it does have a maximum daily load for nutrients. So, obviously, the rock salt will contribute to a chloride, um, uh, impact on the river, but the beet juice, um, is a, um, um, it's a food product, and it will contribute nutrients. Um, we just don't know, uh, yet, in terms of, you know, what is that overall impact? So, that's one of the things that we're going to try to, uh, gather some data on, so that we can measure. Um, and then, I think, Commissioner Larson, as you mentioned, um, you know, one of the things that, um, we have yet to talk about, and that we really need to talk about, is, you know, what is the level of service that the commission and the community desire for snow removal? Because right now, you know, our operation is, is when it begins to snow, um, we start plowing the, the main streets, and then, if we get more than about an inch, we start into the residential streets. And in those, in that operation, we are putting down material, um, on every street that we go on. So, if that's the level of service that we desire for snow removal, then, um, we have statistics in, in how much, um, salt and sand that we put on the different, uh, types of streets, and so, that's something that we can consider. If, if plowing residential streets, um, with, um, maybe more snow on them, or waiting until we get more snow before we, uh, begin to plow, then that would certainly be less material that would go down on the, on the roadway, and then ultimately into the environment. So, um, I think as we go through the, the 2021 budget, um, as we start to present options, for how are we going to, you know, fund our, uh, operations, um, I believe this will be one of the things that we talk about. You know, this is how much it costs us to, to, uh, operate our snow operations, and here are ways that we might be able to save funding, and, um, as well as, um, how much material that we put down, which would certainly have an impact, uh, an environmental impact. Does that sort of get it, what we were talking about this afternoon?
Yeah, Commissioner Larson, I really appreciate that, um, and that, that answers all the questions I had. Thank you.
This is Mayor Ananda. Is there anything else from commissioners? Any other questions? Okay. I guess we don't necessarily, okay. Um, so, at that, I guess, are we ready for a motion?
Do we need to, Commissioner Larson, do we need to ask for public comment, just as a formality?
This item was not one that was marked for, this is Mayor Ananda, um, for public comment.
Thank you. So, this is Commissioner Larson. I'll make a motion to award the annual 2020 de-icing salt contract to Hutchinson Salt Company for 6,350 pounds of de-icing salt, for a total cost of $304,101.50.
Should we amend that to tons from pounds?
Yeah, thank you.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie, aye, second.
We, this is Mayor Ananda, we have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Vice Mayor Finkeldie. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, aye, so that passes unanimously. Thank you. We are ready for public comment. General public comment will be accepted in written form only. General public comments must be submitted 24 hours prior to the start of the meeting. Emails or mail are acceptable, and written can also be dropped by the utility billing drop box located at the cutout at Sixth Street in New Hampshire. All comments should be marked for the city commission. To submit general public comment by email, there is an email there, or by mail, um, you can, you can send them to that address. We do not have any individuals signed up to give public comment tonight, um, so we are ready to move on to our regular agenda items. The first item is, consider conducting a public hearing for a vacation request submitted by Paul Werner Architects for GLM Land LLC and a proven order of vacation to vacate select right-of-way adjacent to the eastern property line of 2112 West 29th Terrace.
Good evening, um, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Chris Rice. I'm a project engineer with the city's Municipal Services and Operations Department, um, and I'll be presenting this vacation of right-of-way request submitted by Paul Werner Architects for GLM land. The request is for, uh, a parcel, an area of land on the eastern side of the property adjacent to 2112 West 29th Terrace, um, and 2851 Iowa Street. And if you'll give me one second? And if you'll give me one second, I'll share my screen to put up a figure that we can reference. Hopefully that's coming across now.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So Chris Rice here. So this area in red, this is the right-of-way to be vacated, it's approximately 30 foot by 20 foot square. It's a result of some planning actions in the seventies that envisioned a larger frontage road here within the KDOT right-of-way. And in the decades since, that right-of-way has been whittled away through various, various actions. So what remains is, again, this, this square here. And so as you can imagine, the, the city does not have a, a use for roadway improvements within the square and utility companies were contacted regarding their use of this area and no comments in opposition of this vacation were received. If this area were to be vacated, it would create a contiguous parcel line here on the eastern edge between 2112 West 29th Terrace and 2851 Iowa Street. And the applicant intends to perform a minor subdivision that would combine each of these lots as well as some adjacent lots into a, a single lot for this redevelopment effort. And so staff recommends approving this order of vacation and then this will be submitted to KDOT for their final review and dedication. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
This is Mayor Nanda, thank you very much, are there any questions? Okay, so I have a quick question for Sheri. Our actions tonight are to open and close the public hearing and then to potentially approve the order. We receive no public comment requests on this, so I just need to, we just need to open it for, for the public hearing, see if there's anyone present and then close it?
That's correct, oh, sorry, Sheri Redeman, city clerk, that is correct.
This is Mayor Nanda, thank you Sheri. Okay, do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
This is Commissioner Bowley, I move we open the public hearing.
Commissioner Larson, second.
This is Mayor Nanda, we have a motion from Commissioner Bowley, a second from Commissioner Larson, Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye, that passes unanimously, the public hearing is now open. Porter, is there anyone here to speak to this item?
I believe you're, not this item?
Not this item, Mayor, thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda, thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
This is Commissioner Bowley, I move we close the public hearing.
Commissioner Larson, second.
This is Mayor Nanda, we have a motion from Commissioner Bowley, a second from Commissioner Larson, Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, that passes unanimously. So with, if there is anything else from commissioners, we can do that now or we can have a motion?
This is Commissioner Larson, I move to approve the order of vacation to vacate select right-of-way adjacent to the eastern property line of 2112 West 29th Terrace and authorize the mayor to execute the order of vacation.
This is Commissioner Shipley, a second.
This is Mayor Nanda, we have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Commissioner Shipley, Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye, that passes unanimously. We are ready for item two, consider approving a request to rezone Z 2065 approximately 1.8 acres from UKU to District RM 32 District located at 1621 West 9th Street submitted by Paul Werner Architects on behalf of the University of Kansas, property owner of record.
Good afternoon, I'm Kyle Kobe with Planning. This application was heard by the Planning Commission at their meeting on April 22nd. The Planning Commission voted six four to approve the request and forward recommendation of the city commission. UKU districts are specifically reserved for properties owned and operated by the University of Kansas. The land use and regulation of these properties are governed by the cooperation agreement between the City of Lawrence, Kansas and the University of Kansas. Uses similar to those contained within the Land Development Code could still take place on property carrying the UKU designation. For example, if the university were to retain ownership of the property and wanted to build a new dormitory there, that process would take place independent of the Land Development Code. Where the Land Development Code would classify such uses as a dormitory and prescribe certain application review processes such as a site plan, property zone UKU would be subject to different code standards and processes. So if any property currently carrying the UKU designation is sold to a private person or entity, the cooperation agreement is no longer applicable to that property. Therefore, the sale of the property would trigger the need to establish a zoning district contained within the Land Development Code and subject the property to the all other applicable standards and regulations of the, of the City of Lawrence. The application before you proposes to rezone the property to RM 32 multi-dwelling residential district. The RM 32 district would permit multi-dwelling structure uses, among others, per section 20 dash 402 of the Land Development Code. Concept plans for a multi-dwelling structure were provided in the application materials and are available in the agenda packet for this item. These drawings are concepts only and do not represent final design plans or formal site plan application materials. This application pertains specifically to the request to rezone the property. If approved, any and all other application review standards would be required before construction takes place on the site. Both a site plan and major subdivision application will be necessary for any proposed development or redevelopment of the property. Issues pertaining to access, design, parking and other code standards will be reviewed and evaluated through these review processes. Staff recommends approval of the request to rezone approximately 1.8 acres from UKU District to RM 32 multi-dwelling residential district based on the findings presented in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have and I believe the applicant is present as well.
This is Mayor Nanda, commissioners have questions?
Mr. Commissioner Bowley, what was the zoning before it was UKU, can you tell me?
This is Kyle Kobe with Planning, I don't remember that off the top of my head, Commissioner.
Mayor? I listened to the, I'm, sorry, this is Courtney Shipley, gosh, I was doing so good last time. I was listening to the Planning Commission meeting and someone had done some historical research and it was before it was developed supposedly, reportedly zoned residential, which is pretty big, but.
This is Mayor Nanda, thank you, Commissioner Shipley, other questions?
Commissioner Larson here, I had just a couple of questions. What's the, the process right now is we're just looking at the zoning, potentially changing the zoning of the property. How is that going to impact the site plans or how the access is going to be laid out? When does that come in play?
Kyle Kobe with Planning, so we would review all of those site-specific details through the site plan application and minor or major subdivision application process. What the rezoning will do is it will give us the zoning district regulations and standards from the Land Development Code to apply to this property as we're reviewing it through those, those application processes. So it would be in, in those processes that we would evaluate all those things. I can't really speak to specifics right now just because we don't have anything to review. At this time, there's been no formal site plan application, but it would be through those processes that we'd evaluate that.
Okay, Commissioner Larson here, so the drawings that we saw in the packet or on our agenda, those, none of those have been approved for access points or building designs or anything like that, correct?
Kyle Kobe with Planning, that's correct, those are intended just for concepts, for reference, for just a general outline of some possibilities at this point in time.
Okay. So Commissioner Larson here, could you just step through the process? We're voting on the, just the zoning tonight, what happens if it doesn't pass or if it does pass, what, what's the process that it goes through?
Kyle Kobe with Planning, so if you were to approve this application tonight, the, and the rezoning were to go forward and be approved, it would, we would update the property subject to the sale of the land from the University of Kansas. And then the applicants would be required to go through those processes that I outlined earlier. If they weren't taking any action on the property, they wouldn't have to apply for a site plan or the minor subdivision right-of-way. But as soon as they knew kind of like what their plans were, if a demolition was being planned, if they, you know, have a concept or design for their replacement structure, before they could do any work on the site, that's where we would go through those processes. A denial of the application would maintain the current zoning on the property.
Okay. So if, if, if we're to pass tonight and it went to the site plan phase, at what point do the, does the neighborhood get involved or can the neighborhood get involved during the planning of the site?
Kyle Kobe with Planning, there's a notice component to neighboring property owners with the site plan and subdivision application review process. The major subdivision would have both a preliminary and a final plat, and at least the preliminary would go through, it would depend on some of the component parts as far as what different bodies would need to approve or not, say if there's easements being dedicated or something like that. But the site plan process is an administrative process, so that would not go through a public hearing. But the plating process does contain a public hearing component, so there'd be an opportunity to participate that way. But then also, as I said, there is a notice component to neighboring property owners for both of those processes as well, where staff would be able to receive that feedback and incorporate that into our review.
Okay, so what if the neighborhood did not agree with how the site plan was laid out?
I think I might throw that one to Amy Miller, the Planning Director.
Can I just remind everyone to state their name and position when they speak? This was Mayor.
Amy Miller, interim Planning Director. Through the site plan process, there is an appeal process. So after an administrative determination is made, there is an appeal process that somebody within that 400 feet, a neighborhood association, even the applicant can appeal. That appeal would then go to the city commission for consideration. I'd also like to remind the commission on this particular item, since it is a rezoning, I believe you need to declare ex parte conversations.
Didn't know that. So I had just, this is Commissioner Larson, I just had another question for Amy, I, I guess. So if a, if a neighbor or a neighborhood association, does a neighborhood association actually have to be on the property or can it be an adjacent neighborhood association? Because this particular project, I didn't think I saw it as part of a neighborhood association, but the property right across, within the 400-foot radius is in a neighborhood association. Would they still have the right to appeal?
Amy Miller, interim Planning and Development Services Director. So the neighborhood association under the appeal guidelines is the registered neighborhood association that the property lies within. So it's not necessarily a neighborhood association that would have boundaries that are adjacent or near, it would have to be a neighborhood association that the property is within.
Commissioner Larson here, even though that neighborhood associate, associate is part of that 400-foot boundary?
Amy Miller, interim PDS Director. Any property owner within the 400 feet could appeal.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Larson, that, that part I was, I didn't realize, so that's, that's disappointing, but if that's our rules, because I, it would seem to me that the neighborhood association that's impacted, directly impacted by that would have the option to be able to appeal the case. So right now, my understanding is that's just a property owner within that 400-foot radius. Since the property is not, I don't think it's in a neighborhood association.
Mayor? Commissioner Shipley, I had a question, I think for Kyle or Amy. If I understand the development code, there are other zoning zones they, they would be eligible for like RM 12, 15, 24? Is that, is that accurate? Would they be eligible for those?
Kyle Kobe with Planning, they have the ability to request any of those zoning districts that you outlined. This particular one, RM 32 is its own zoning district, it does contain a lot of similar components to the other multi-dwelling residential districts. So I, I don't know, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Commissioner Shipley, yes it does, and, and where I'm going with this is, and I, I didn't see planning have any discussion about this, but I, to me, I see a way where we can still get infill and increase density, simply not 57 units. So I'm, I'm sorry, Jeff Crick's not here to do the fast math on how many units that would be for 12, 15 or 24, but it's going to be an increase in density, whatever it is, and they'll certainly be able to build. So by way of compromise and by way of listening to the concerns of the neighbors, I wondered about simply decreasing slightly the number of units that might address some of the traffic congestion issues and the safety issues. Amy Miller, interim Planning Director. The request before us that was made by the applicant was through the RM 32 district and that was what the staff undertook as an, as an exercise through that staff review. As Kyle mentioned, a lot of our multifamily districts, the review would have been pretty similar. And so, yes, possibility that the commission could do something different. I'd also like to correct something I said earlier in reference to Commissioner Larson's question. The neighborhood association, it's the neighborhood association for the neighborhood the site plan is located in or is adjacent to. So you are correct, it could be a neighborhood association that is adjacent. I apologize for that.
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Larson, thank you very much, Amy, I appreciate it.
Kyle Kobe with Planning, I just want to try to address that most recent question. If I understood correctly, I think one of the components of this is, just to be clear, the RM 32 residential district would not mandate that particular zoning density, that would just be the maximum limit, the upper limit that they could operate under. You know, it, it wouldn't be, I, we don't really know right now what the exact details of that application would be, but, you know, it is at least theoretically possible that they could be, they could make a recommendation that would be in line with something you would find in a lower-density district, but RM 32 would just sort of have the, the cap higher than it would in the other districts.
Commissioner Shipley, so just to clarify, if, if we were to deny this, they would still have at least three other more dense, buildable zoning opportunities, we wouldn't be boxing them out of their ability to build.
Kyle Kobe with Planning, they would have the opportunity to request a different zoning district and I think maybe Amy can help clarify what the scope of the, I guess, the approval process at this point is, if that can be examined during this, this process or if it would require a, a wholly new application and review process.
Amy Miller, interim PDS Director, it's going to take me a minute to research that.
This is Mayor Nanda, Courtney, I'm sorry, you might have more questions, I'm sorry, Commissioner Shipley, you might have more questions. In order to give some time to look at that, I think that you're kind of hitting on a question that I have, we're establishing essentially a maximum here. And so if we are able to kind of think about that property broadly and its capacity, or at least our perception as a group, its capacity, my questions were along those same lines because presumably the zoning request is coming from KU because they want to sell the property. And so in order to sell the property, setting expectations for a buyer is pretty important and if the conversation... And if the conversation is, you know, less density, I just want to make sure that, and I'll talk more about this after we ask questions, but how are we, how are we setting those expectations through this zoning? Is it something that we can analyze this evening? Or is it something that would require a whole new process? So I guess my, my question is aligned with yours, Commissioner Shipley, so I appreciate it.
Commissioner Larson here, if there's no more questions from Commissioner Shipley, I've got a couple more. So I'll just go ahead. I want to just touch on the, the stormwater runoff issue, that area, and I know that, again, this is rezoning, but I think you just, I want to make sure I understand the impact of the stormwater runoff and how that would be handled. Does the stormwater from that site run northeast towards the river, north, or, you know, what's the route of the, the lines where that stormwater runs? Because we've got significant stormwater issues in the Old West Lawrence neighborhood, so I was curious as to if that has even been looked at, or is that something that comes at a later time? And how is that handled?
Kyle Kobe with planning, yeah, that's one of the components of the site plan and subdivision process that we'll look at. There'll be a number of studies that the stormwater engineer would, would review to, and review that against what our code standards are and what the impact this property will have on both its own, you know, within this lot and also for the surrounding area. I don't know the details about stormwater runoff right now on the site, and I think that whatever was present on the site now, obviously it would be reviewed, because whatever changes were taking place would, would impact that. So that will be one of the big components of those review processes, is ensuring that all relevant standards along those lines are addressed and met.
Commissioner Larson here, is, are there any stormwater engineers with us tonight? Matt Bond or anybody?
Dave Wagner, director of the MSO. Lisa, Matt's not with us tonight, so we have to defer that question.
Okay. Well, I do think it's important, Commissioner Larson here, I do think it's important, because we already are overloaded in that Old West Lawrence neighborhood with some stormwater runoff, so I'm, I'm very curious as to how we can handle additional runoff, given that scenario, unless we create whole new lines that, that leads towards the, the river. So I'm very curious about that.
Amy Miller, interim PDS director. On the stormwater issue, as part of their site plan application, and even potentially with the major subdivision, they'll have to have an approved drainage study that's been reviewed and approved by MSO as part of that application. And going back to your previous questions on your possibilities for action this evening, any action that is contrary to the planning commission's recommendation, which was for approval on a 6-4 vote of the RM 32 district, would need to be done by a two-thirds majority vote. So either a modification or denial would need to be done with a two-thirds vote.
Okay. Okay, thank, Commissioner Larson here, I had one more question. I just wanted to stick about the historical value of that property. You know, we've, the old, it's the old father's studio, we all know the history regarding the filming, as well as the company that was involved with some of the productions from way back when. Is there any thought, or is, you know, at what phase do we think about the idea of somehow saving the historical aspect of that, either, and I know the building is, is something that structurally is not sound, but somehow making it so that we don't lose that history? Is, is that something that's considered anywhere in the site plan or any, anywhere down the road?
Kyle Kobe with planning, if this property were a, a listed property on the local, state, or national register, that would, that would be one of the big components of the, of those review processes. Since it's not listed, it would be, I guess, incumbent upon the applicant or the property owner to apply for a listing, so that, and this is something that we've discussed here and there. If they were, if this were a listed property, there would be some tax incentive-type programs that they could take advantage of, but as you said as well, there's a structural component to the building right now that they're looking at. I think that the applicant would need to address some of this, but as of right now, a historic review is, would not be a part of either the site plan or the minor subdivision application, because the property is not currently listed as a historic property.
Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda, are there any other questions for staff? Okay, we do have to disclose our ex parte communication, let's do that before we have public comment. I've received emails in regard to this, but I've not engaged in any conversations in regard to this, and I believe that, I want to say that all of the emails that I've received have been included in the public comment on this item, but I'm not 100% sure on that. Tony, do I need to, one, check and see that, and two, make sure that all that's consistent?
It would be helpful if you could summarize the communications that you received for this evening's discussion.
Okay. So I will say it's mostly from neighborhood folks who either live on the road that will be impacted by the proposed exit, or individuals focused on the elements of that property, so it's nothing that hasn't been discussed this evening.
Yeah, Commissioner Larson here, I had a discussion with the applicants, Lance Johnson and Doug Compton, I think the architect was there, Paul Warner, I believe, who's there. It's been quite some time ago, but we had a conversation regarding what their plans were, and they were very preliminary, back-of-the-napkin-type plans that they, they presented to me, and we just had a discussion about what that was. And I also had a neighbor, Jay and Kim Clements, I believe, is who stopped by my house here last week, just have a discussion about their concerns with the project, and, and, and the main concern was the, zoning was part of it, but also just the fact that the, any access onto Avalon would be something they felt was very problematic and, and danger to our neighborhood. And I did receive several emails from neighbors, some of them are in the packet. I'm trying to think if there's one that wasn't in the packet, it seemed like there was, and I apologize, I did not have, I'm not prepared, as I should be on this. I'm just look, Erin Seibel, that's who I spoke, or I had an extensive email exchange with her regarding the issue, and again, it revolved around the idea of the access points and the concerns as what it will do for our neighborhood as well as the rezoning.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldeich. I've had, besides emails in the packets, I've had emails and texts from neighbors, Carolyn Groot, Patrick Schmitz, Mr. Hildman, who'll be speaking tonight, basically repeating what is in their public comments, I believe, just, you know, traffic and so forth. I also had a conversation with the applicant, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Compton, and Mr. John, Roger Johnson, some point in the, in the past, again, just talking generally about the, the project.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, I, as far as I know, I have the same correspondence that you have all mentioned, and again, I'm assuming, making the same comments they have, mostly about safety, either on Avalon or Ninth. So I don't think there's anything usual. I did at the very last minute, though, I was just looking for it, someone texted me, and I don't know this person's name, Caroline Groot's, just saying she objected to the proposal. So I didn't, I had no interactions further than the regular correspondence that we got.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Bowley. I had a meeting with Lance Johnson, Doug Compton, and Roger Johnson. I also have received the emails that the other commissioners have. I got a little more personal emails from Dwight and Peggy Hiltman, and from Nancy and Marlon Harmony, and pretty much all this stuff's in the public record, I think.
Mayor Nanda, thank you for taking the time to do that. So we will now open it up for public comment. We have one individual who signed up prior to the meeting to speak, and that is White Hiltman. Please go ahead with your three minutes.
Mayor, Amy Miller, interim planning director. The applicant is also present on the call this evening and did wish to give a presentation. I believe Paul Warner is available.
This is Mayor Nanda, I apologize, I should have made sure that that was all of our staff presentation prior to moving into public comment. I would like for the applicant to speak before our public comment, so that when that public comment is given, it's addressing all of the information that has been shared with us. Mr. Hiltman, I apologize for that. And then we will, we will open it back up for public comment after we hear from the applicant.
Good evening, everybody. Paul Warner, Paul Warner, thank you, Mayor. Like to thank Kyle for answering a bunch of questions right out of the gate. This is unique, as you guys have already mentioned, in that it must be zoned something else. KU can't, has to, can't sell it without some other zoning, so that's, that's where we started with. We met with staff, we discussed it, we looked at the maps, the surrounding properties. RM 32 does seem to make perfect sense. The staff report certainly acknowledges that as well. Some key points, it's Tier 1 in our Plan 2040. This is an infill project, which is what we thought we were all trying to pursue. Some of your comments have already shown what infill projects in Lawrence can be, can be very difficult, but we, we think this is a great site for an infill project. We did listen to the neighbors' comments at Planning Commission. Certainly, we feel access, traffic, buffer yards, heights of the buildings are, are site plan issues, which you've seen the preliminary sketches, we really have not done much more than that. And we have surveyed the property, working towards those sorts of things. Everything is going a little slower these days than it used to be, we're a little bit more inefficient, but as Kyle and Amy have both mentioned, this property requires plating, preliminary plat and final plat, and requires at least a site plan once we have a zoning to work with. So we've been trying to do what we can in order, but it is a little bit of a struggle to go too far without knowing that the, the potential owner of the property actually has something. We do think it is a key infill site. Ninth Street is a major corridor. It's good for, there's already bus traffic, bus lanes, bicycle, obviously access to KU. It is a prime location for infill. We do feel better about Avalon. I just don't see cut-through traffic heading south on Avalon. I know neighbors get concerned, and we all worry, sometimes we all worry about projects, and, you know, nobody wants, they want to know what's going to happen in their neighborhood, but I just don't see why somebody heads south on Avalon unless they're actually going to visit somebody. It doesn't seem to get you anywhere, it just does not seem like a, a, a cut-through location. But again, access, traffic, green space, buffer yards, all of those are site plan items that we feel confident about addressing, once we have a zoning and once we have something a little bit more to work with. I'll address a couple of your questions you already mentioned. We do think RM 32 is the right answer, which we usually evaluate density by bedrooms, not necessarily by units. Our development code still doesn't address that. Due to a text amendment, it does a little bit, but so I would, I would really encourage you not to just knock this down to some other lower number, thinking that that drops the units or drops the bedrooms. It is about a traffic number, it's about how many cars we can park. It is a difficult site, it falls 30 feet from Avalon to the east, so we really need to get in there and, and start making some, some decisions based on those items. Stormwater, the Commissioner Larson asked about, actually if, I don't want to say scrape the site, but if we start from scratch, actually gets the, means that we have to meet the most stringent stormwater standards that the city has. There is a very large stormwater pipe that leaves this site, but currently on this entire site, there is no detention. I don't believe there's any detention upstream. There are two essentially creeks that come from the south and one from the west that feed this pipe. So developing or redeveloping this site will, it'll certainly improve the situation, it certainly can't make it any, any worse, but we will have to provide detention on this site, and as Amy mentioned, do a full-blown stormwater study with whatever site plan we submit. Trying to think what else we asked. Again, just to address the, the density, I just would really hate us just arbitrarily, you know, think that RM 24 is less than RM 32 and, and knock it down before we get a chance to, to really get in there. The potential owners want to do a nice project, we're all, you know, struggling a little bit with timing and what KU's going to do, and whether it's this year or next year, or how those things go. But we look for your support. I was a little disappointed in the vote of Planning Commission. I will say that, you know, I feel for two of the commissioners had a personal contact with the building, they either went to school there, and, and that I understood. I will say we were probably a little bit disappointed in the chairman's comments after he mentioned that this is exactly what Plan 2040 was all about, and it followed it, and you have a positive staff report, and we meet all the criteria, and then he still voted against it. Again, I think he wanted to be sure in his own words that, that we addressed the traffic, we're prepared to address the traffic, and we look forward to doing that. So I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
This is Mayor Nanda, any commissioners have questions for Mr. Warner?
Yeah, Commissioner Larson here. Mr. Warner, I would, your mention of the stormwater issue, granted that, that staff will require you to make sure you right-size that for your property for stormwater, but the issue is not necessarily, you know, how it's right-sized for your property, what we have is, is an issue down gradient, where we've had in the Old West Lawrence neighborhood, where it's never been right-sized for the stormwater runoff in, in that neighborhood, and it's just gotten worse over the years because of all the building that's been going on at KU. Everything flows down towards that neighborhood, and it's been a, a huge issue, especially in the past several years where we've had so many rains. So we can right-size it on the property all we want, but if the down gradient aspect of it is not right-sized, then it really doesn't matter, I don't think. And I, I'm just really concerned about the stormwater issue and that.
Paul Warner noted, thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda, are there any questions for Mr. Warner?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldeich. Paul, have you, you know, one of the concerns is Ninth Street traffic, I mean, obviously this is the Avalon traffic too, and I assume you'll, you're open to working on a site plan that provides some limitation on the Avalon traffic, but what about Ninth Street? Do you think you have enough right-of-way there in case there needs to be a expansion or an additional turn lane? Do you have enough room to work with there on that site?
The CFS engineers are looking at that right now, we, we think we do. To your point, we might as well, you know, our, some of our policies, if that's the right word, with MSO about access, don't always align with neighbors' desires and don't always align with the best traffic pattern we can come up with. I I would say currently that the, the city's policy is probably to access Avalon. Back to the extensive grade to the east is a partial problem. But I feel, I feel good about wanting to work through this. I feel good that even if we have an access point for fire on Avalon or access to the property, that the, the people leaving this, for the most part, will not be going south on Avalon. I mean, Ninth Street is a fairly heavily traveled street. So traffic guys love to know the numbers. I mean, I, we'll, we'll know the percentage of the amount of traffic we're adding to that street when we get to that stage. We think the, there's improvements at Ninth and Iowa at the intersection with Quick Trip. What that should help. We, again, we like the idea that we're on the south side, that we see most of our traffic heading Ninth Street to Emory if it's going to campus or blocking buses, traffic. I think we addressed that during the site plan.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldey. As a follow-up to Commissioner Larson's question, I know Matt Bond isn't here, so I can't ask him. But I recall when I was on the Planning Commission, there were several times where because of downstream water issues, you have to detain water on your site to slow the pace going down river. Paul, have you been involved in a project like that? Do I, does that seem like something that could happen, that could actually improve the, the down gradient?
Paul Warner, Paul Warner Architects, that's exactly right. And, and Matt is, is great at this stuff. We think CFS engineers have a good reputation. It is, it is a balance between, I mean, right now, all of the water that comes onto this site goes directly through this site and into a pipe. And as Commissioner Larson mentioned, probably does head straight down Ninth Street and into Old West Lawrence. There's, there's no stopping that water today. So we anticipate stopping not only the water we're creating, but also the water that's currently running through our site from off-site areas, including all the houses along Avalon and south and southwest of those areas. But, you know, Matt, that's what, that's what Matt's role is and he, he does a great job at it. And you may have mentioned, there's also, if there's something downstream that does more of an improvement, he can also require that of the developers on this property. It's not all, it's not only, it's not always the best answer to worry about the detention on a property. There, there can be some improvement downstream that would help more people. And so we can, we can look at those things as well.
Vice Mayor Finkeldey, thank you.
Commissioner Larson here. Mr. Warner, I appreciate your comments on the, working consistently on the downstream issues to some degree because I think that's going to be the main way that we're going to resolve it is to, to take care of it all along that line. But, you know, I realize that's totally, that's not a question for, necessarily for this project, but it is something that we've long been needing to address. I did want to ask you about the historical value of the, of the building itself. I've received some comments from some of the community members about the possibility of somehow preserving some aspect of that building or somehow, you know, preserving some of the, the items or whatever it is from the building to maybe be stored or restored into Watkins Museum. Have you guys considered anything like that?
We have. I, I think, I think it's a little early to decide. I, I know in the big picture, the, our clients don't see this as a real adaptive, you know, reuse of the entire building. But I think there has to be some things out of that building that we can incorporate into our project or to other things. And we just haven't got that far yet. I, I think that's on the list to look at. We don't take tearing things down lightly. It's just, you know, we're playing by the rules that we're given and, and it's not a listed structure and, and that's where we're going from. But I, to your point, I think absolutely we need to find some elements of that building that can be incorporated into the project or to other locations.
Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda. Any other questions?
Commissioner Larson here, just one, one more. Just wanted to address a little bit on the potential traffic. I should have disclosed from the beginning, I, I actually live on Avalon in that 1100 block, which is about two blocks south of there. And I would beg to differ on the, on the traffic way through there. We get amazing amount of traffic when college is in, in play. There's essentially no parking where my house is at anytime college is, is in, is, is open. So I would, I would be, yeah, there's going to be a traffic issue if we have an Avalon access. So I, so access, so I'm really concerned about any sort of Avalon access and how that's handled. And I know my neighbors are very concerned about that and I'm, and I would be hesitant about not mentioning that. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that earlier.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. All right, we will invite Mr. Hiltman up for his public comment at this time.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak in opposition to the rezoning of the former Old Father Studios to RM 32. I urge you in the strongest terms to deny the rezone request. I am a longtime resident of Lawrence and have worked passionately to build our community. My wife and I lived 250 feet from the property and have for the past 30 years. We believe this project will not benefit our community at large, merely a group of apartment developers at the expense of our neighborhood. In written comments, I have highlighted the staggering increase in population density, dangerous increased traffic, and especially on Avalon where virtually all of the KU traffic will go, and the unique infrastructure issues involved at the site. Planning Commission Chairman Jim Carpenter said, "I know this complies with a lot of what we're trying to accomplish, but I do have concerns about some of these issues and I'm going to vote in opposition just to send that message." He actually lived on Avalon Road when he moved to Lawrence. "I know city staff loves infill projects, especially for college students, but please consider a shrinking student population. We must accept the reality of a post-COVID population shift at that site. I knew Charlie and Tensie Oldfather and I spent time at their home and I acted with Charlie in community theater and I attended Lawrence Public Schools with their children. They would have vigorously closed the University of Kansas, selling off their generous gift, this property, to the highest bidder to build yet more apartments. It is hard to imagine the Old Fathers would not have wanted the building preserved and repurposed. Since the 1-point acres of land on the property sits, that it sits on was originally zoned residential, I believe it would be more appropriate zoning to return it to residences or for a park. There are a number of acres of private land that Sigma Nu owns that would make this an ideal location for additional green space in the center of Lawrence and a modest buffer and place for children and residents to enjoy instead of 57 additional apartments. The mega trend in Lawrence nationally is not to have larger campus population. More apartment units will undermine our, the neighborhoods that we ought to be nurturing. I feel threatened. I sincerely believe my children would carry me out of our home and this imperils all we've built. This is our only real opportunity to get the building repurposed."
Mayor Nanda, thank you. Porter, is there anyone else present to give public comment on this item?
No, mayor.
Thank you. So we will now bring this back to the commission. Again, the request is to rezone 1.8 acres from UKU to RM 32. We've had several questions. Anything else from the commission?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldey. Obviously, I know we're not, this question for staff, but I know we're not obviously looking at the traffic issues tonight, but, you know, I've, I've lived very close to that intersection for 12 years. I know when we did the, we did some reconstruction of Avalon and I believe at that time, Old Father was still in use by KU and there was a lot of traffic in and out of Old Father. I remember driving by with that parking lot being full. Do we have data from back in the day when we did those previous, that previous traffic work about what kind of traffic was generated by Old Father before this? And, and the changes we made at the intersection and how they worked?
Planning, this is Kyle. I know that there was a study that I saw that was done, I think a little bit over a decade ago nearby. But again, that would have been, the context at the time would be different than it is now and different than what the proposed development would be. A traffic impact study would be a component of the site plan review process. So we would have more detailed information at that time. I don't know that we have any information available right now that would really speak directly to this particular item at hand.
Vice Mayor Finkeldey, and I don't know if this is a comment as much as a question. I mean, I, as I think about what else this site could be used for and I think about the traffic, you know, it, as I recall, from the time it was the Old Father Studio, when you had students coming in, you have people walking in the building who came at eight and five. You also had students who were coming in and out of the building throughout the day. You know, the class, it would fill up. I don't know what kind of classes they had in there. You'd have classes, people would come and go. It would seem like that might be more of a traffic generator than the residential property. I mean, I think of, I certainly want a coffee shop in there or a restaurant or dental office that would generate ongoing, ongoing traffic. I mean, so I just, I think when we, we go to look at the, the traffic generation, I'd be very interested to see how, you know, other uses would, would compare to that. I mean, obviously, if it was a park or if it was empty, anything will generate more traffic than an empty building. But when you compare it to other uses, I'd be interested in, you know, learning at that time when we look at the site plan and the plat about how the impact of the, of, of that is, you know, of that traffic is at that point. So that's just kind of a, a basic comment. I guess while I have the floor, so I don't have to reinduce myself, I would add, you know, I think a lot, this appears to me lots of ways to be similar to something we did, what, two weeks ago? Three weeks ago out at Sixth and, or Eighteenth and Wackalooza, Eighteenth and Research Park Drive, where we had a zoning that the neighbors did not want residential traffic on their residential street. They wanted traffic focused towards the Collector Street. You know, we had issues with the plat, the site plan. Obviously, we've sent that back to, to staff and the applicant looking at, you know, ways to try to keep that traffic off the residential street. In lots of ways, I see this to be a similar issue. I mean, I think, you know, the neighbors, the applicant, and to the extent the staff can safely through the file code and other reasons, will do all they can to keep traffic off of Avalon and certainly on the Ninth Street, which I believe can handle it. I know some neighbors are concerned about Ninth Street. But, I mean, I do think as we walk through that plating and siding, site plan, you know, I might encourage, so we don't run into the same trouble. I'd hope to see the plat and the site plan at the same time. We kind of got sideways on that in the last issue. So if that's possible from the applicant and staff, it'd be great to see those at the same time so we can see how they work together. And I'm also interested to see if any other improvements need to be done on Ninth Street, which is why I asked the question about, it appears we have some area there that we could extend that turn lane. I mean, some of the neighbors have talked about the short turn lane at Avalon. And although I think that's made that intersection much, much safer than it was before they put it in, I could see possibly some reasons to have an extended turn lane there. And I, I would think we'd have the, the right-of-way there to, to do that. And so anyway, I, I look forward to, to seeing how some of those things can be addressed going forward.
Commissioner Shipley. Yeah, just a little statement I would make about Ninth Street because I, I agree with Commissioner Finkeldey that I'm, I'm confident that staff will take all the safety considerations. But one thing we do sometimes forget about is move-in day. And never was it more clear to me what debacle that can be as when the Here Building unfortunately opened late and Ninth Street was a parking lot. So again, that's only a couple of days out of the year. And again, I guess if I could just mention again, you know, we don't have to say yes to the maximum number of cars. Actually, I think that was a great point the applicant made up, that it really, one way to think about it is the number of cars you can park. So when we think about the concerns, I was overwhelmingly, anyway, hearing from the neighbors, it's about parking and traffic. So whether it's 57 people or 57 units or 57 bedrooms, you know, when I look at the concept designs, the applicant's right, I can see how many people are going to be going in and out theoretically of either of the two driveways, if there is two. So again, to still keep the density, but maybe keep it to a more appropriate scale for being right next to a neighborhood, I, I feel like that, that could be an appropriate compromise that again would bring traffic down, not as many people, mitigate traffic on Ninth and Avalon. And I don't, I mean, I don't know if staff wants to comment on that. I, I do know that's kind of a distinction between units and bedrooms and, you know, I don't know if you're doing communal living or anything like that. So I, you know, I understand that 57 sounds like a lot to some people, perhaps. And I appreciate the applicant making that comment. I just wonder if diminishing the density, but still making, you know, adding quite a few people in that space would be a possibility.
Mayor Nanda, did you want an answer to that question, Courtney?
Sorry, mayor, this is Commissioner Shipley. I, I maybe just want feedback from other commissioners, if that's something they're interested in thinking about. You know, I don't, I don't feel like our town is supposed to be frozen in amber. But also I do think just because you can fit a lot of people in a space doesn't mean you should fit a lot of people in a space. And that's something we talk about in 2042 is scale and appropriateness. So, you know, a tool that we have is to limit, at this stage, the number of cars or units or whatever you think that might, might negatively affect the neighborhood, which is established. Any other commissioners have thoughts?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldey. You know, I guess, I guess with, with my time on the Planning Commission and based upon what Paul was saying, and maybe Amy Miller could, could jump in here when I'm, I'm done. But, you know, you can have 24-bedroom units and have 80 people. You can have 57 one-bedroom units and have 57 people. You know, you can, and, and the density sometimes is calculated by those units. What often becomes the problem is how big is the building and how many spots are left, you know, to park people? So whether or not it's the density in and of itself is not as important as how many people the building can hold and the, the appropriate number of parking spaces. So I, I believe the, at this point, saying RM 32 gives us the possibility of 57 one-bedroom apartments. Right? If we said RM 24, they could end up with, and again, was Jeff Crick when you need him on the math, but you could end up with, okay, fine, you're, you're left with 40 units, but we're going to do 43-bedroom units and in theory have more people if we can park them. So I think that's all part of the, the process that staff will go through and the applicant will go through and the neighbors will have a chance to weigh in on. I agree with, you know, scale and parking. I mean, there's a limited size and with any infill, that's going to be your driving force. So I guess maybe if, if Amy or whoever, the staff members wanted to comment on that. But I think I, at the moment, support the RM 32, but knowing that we'll see all the, see all that come out through the plating and the site, site plan process.
Amy Miller, interim PDS director.
Amy Miller, interim PDS director. The zoning in our development code is based on density, which is determined by dwelling unit. Doesn't matter how many bedrooms are in that dwelling unit. So the RM32 allows you a maximum of 32 dwelling units per acre. Um, there are other site planning considerations that we'll get into that are based on bedroom. For instance, the parking requirement. You're required with a multi-dwelling structure to have one parking space for every bedroom in addition to, um, one for every 10 units for guests. So you are required to park one per bedroom. So that's where the difference comes in between the site planning issues and the zoning.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie, that was much more succinct than I did. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bowley. I'd like to follow up with a couple of questions. Dwight, in his comments, mentioned residential zoning from the, uh, pre-UKU. I'm struggling to understand how Centron would have been developed in residential zoning, although it possibly could have happened. Um, the other question would be to, um, just confirm, you know, what is required for an appeal of a site plan? And would this, and that the site plan would be an administrative process, or would it come back to us? Thank you.
Amy Miller, interim PDS director. I'll start with some of the site planning questions. The site plan is an administrative process, and it goes through our office. We extend reviews out to reviewers, and until the project meets code, it does not get approved. Once it is approved, there is an appeal period, um, where anybody can appeal, um, and basically that involves writing a letter to our office stating that they'd like to appeal it. Typically, what we try to do in those situations is, there's an active appeal on the books, we try and work with the applicant and the neighbors to try to resolve some of those issues and identify what those issues are, that are, that are the impediments. Um, and then if they can't get resolved, and the appeal is not withdrawn, then that would come before the city commission for a decision. Um, in terms of looking back and, and trying to determine, um, how the building was constructed under whatever zoning was in place at the time, I can't speak to that at this moment. That would take a little research from us.
This is Commissioner Bowley, and I appreciate those responses. So it's possible for one neighbor to, uh, appeal, and have that be considered an appeal? It doesn't take a, a certain number of people or a certain percentage of the neighbors?
Amy Miller, interim PDS director. That is correct. Um, it can be one, one, one property owner within that 400 feet.
Commissioner Larson here. Amy, could you clarify, does the neighborhood association have a right to appeal?
Yes. Um, the neighborhood is, like I said, there's a couple different, um, people that would have standing to appeal. Um, the applicant could even appeal it administrative, um, decision on a site plan. Um, the neighborhood association, or as I corrected earlier, even the adjacent neighborhood association, and then also any property owner within 400 feet.
Thank you, Amy.
This is Mayor Nanda. I think I'm the only commissioner who actually spent significant amount of time in Old Father as a film major. Um, and so I do want to touch on, you know, the, uh, little tug at my heart, um, at the thought of that building going away, um, with the memories I have associated with it. I understand it, but if I'm being honest, um, reflecting on even 15 years ago, when I was in that building, um, it was rough. And, uh, while it felt very special, a very special place to be, to go, um, to be with my fellow film students, um, it needed significant work then. And, you know, this is, this is the lesson of deferred maintenance, I think in some ways, um, because I, I do think that there is a lot about that building that is highly unfortunate, um, because of what, what it came from, the generous gift, um, and, and you know, the hard thing about giving a gift is that you're giving it away, and, um, that evolves over time what that looks like. Um, but it is a very special place, and I do want to acknowledge that. I think it's important. Um, I think that I also have experience, you know, with the intersections around Emory and Avalon, you know, whether it was when I was an undergrad riding my bike, uh, from 12th and Louisiana to the Merck, as an employee, both on Mississippi, as well as at the Iowa Street location, um, having worked in Caruso Leary, uh, which, which kind of dumps out on Emory, if you're going toward downtown in most instances, um, there's a lot of use of Emory and Avalon around KU and with students, and I think that we have to really think about the impacts of that. And maybe that isn't necessarily the whole conversation to have now, but I also think that this conversation can set expectations for anyone who might be coming forward with a site plan in the future, to say that, you know, we acknowledge that there are issues here, and I know that there have been Ninth Street improvements over the years, in the 20 years that I've been driving it, and they're continuing, including the Ninth and Iowa space. Um, but those two roads in particular, um, Emory is very curvy, can be very dangerous, um, folks can be traveling very quickly. Um, I think that there are some interesting and unique, um, solutions that we could possibly talk about, though, in that, um, we shouldn't preclude ourselves by taking those off the table necessarily, like a ride out only onto Avalon, which would dump out onto Ninth, um, you know, other options. But I, I do think as a city, though, that's going to put us in a position of, you know, adding a stoplight, uh, addressing Emory at some point, to some extent, um, and, and other issues that are kind of come, come back to us. Uh, I also appreciated Vice Mayor Finkeldie's statements around, you know, what else could go there? It's not going to be a, it's not going to be a drive-through, it's not going to be, you know, there's really very little that it could safely be. Um, but it is a space that is going to be used in some way. We know KU is in similar fiscal future as us, and so holding on to that property for perpetuity is not in their interest, most likely fiscally, and so we have to prepare for how that's going to continue to move forward. Um, that's a lot of thoughts that I had as we were talking about this. Um, I do think that we can address those traffic issues. I think we have to be realistic about the impact that it's going to have on our budget, uh, potentially, as we talk about those. And I, I just wanted to acknowledge the specialness of that building, and the pain and sadness that folks are feeling at the potential loss of that.
This is Commissioner Bowley. I appreciate your comments, Mayor, and, and, uh, it's good to hear from one of us who's been in the building and, and experienced it. Um, one aspect of your commentary that I'd like to address is that it's very difficult for us to criticize other people for deferred maintenance. I mean, deferred maintenance is such-
I was empathizing.
-an aspect of our experience that we need to be, um, understanding, perhaps, how difficult it is, and acknowledge our challenges in maintaining our assets. That's-
This is Mayor Nanda. I appreciate that. Um, we certainly, we certainly have, have no ground on which to stand, um, and we can empathize with, with the difficult decisions that, that we have to make. Thank you, Commissioner Bowley.
Commissioner, Commissioner Larson here. Um, just want to add a few points. I really appreciate your comments on the value, the historical value of that property. I had never been in it, but I've driven by it hundreds, if not thousands, of times. Um, but I also would like to, to mention something that hasn't been, uh, discussed here, I don't think, is, is, you know, this is a project that actually, um, aligns quite a bit with our Plan 2040, and this is, the Plan 2040, that was a six, seven-year project of our community, that came together and said, this is how we want to grow our community. So I, I don't think we can forget that. But I also appreciate Commissioner Shipley's thoughts about right, make sure it's the, the right type of, type of project, and that it's within, um, you know, existing properties that are there, and that it, that it kind of matches up with that. But also, these types of projects also use existing infrastructure, which is really important, because that's really costly for cities to maintain, and by using it in existing infrastructure, um, that, you know, obviously is a environmentally sustainable way to do this. Um, I do, um, this is obviously the very beginning stages of this pro, project. Um, I do agree with, um, Commissioner Finkeldie regarding the rezoning, as to what, it's going to be rezoned somehow. Um, I mean, it's going to be rezoned at some point. What it should be, I don't, even that's too to be determined. Um, but right now, we've got before us the RM32, and, um, you know, I'd be concerned if it turned into any other type of zoning, other than, you know, maybe going back to the original. But, um, you know, I, you know, I think that the battle here is going to be down the road, and making sure that it's protective of the neighborhood, as far as access onto Avalon, that's something I'm going to look at really, really closely. And then also the stormwater issue is something I'm very much worried about, and, um, you know, we're just at the beginning stages of this, but, but I'm going to support the rezoning, um, because I, it's going to have to be rezoned, and this is, um, this is just a step in that process.
Mayor, oh, sorry, go ahead. Vice Mayor.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldie, and I would echo a lot of your comments. I, I do want to make it clear, and I, and I think, uh, Mayor Nanda, you're correct, this is, at least one time, we can telegraph to, to the staff, the neighbors, and the applicant kind of what, what we hope to see when it comes out, without knowing details and data and all of that, um, that certainly, um, we'll take into effect. But, you know, certainly I think, you know, that, you know, I certainly appreciate the neighbors' concern about traffic onto Avalon. And to the extent we can put traffic off residential streets, onto our collector streets, we want to support that in every way we can. Um, and I also think that, um, you know, infill development, one of the good things about infill development, not only does it help use existing infrastructure, as, um, Mr. Warner pointed out, we also might get out of this maybe some, um, sanitary sewer issues that might, um, solve some downstream stuff. We also maybe could get some improvements to Ninth Street. Um, these are things we could get that we don't actually have to pay for, that the developer pays for, um, as part of this project. It could also be something that we pay for as part of it. I mean, there's a lot of possibilities there. But my point is that, um, I do think infill is important, I think this is a good infill project, but not at all to say to the neighbors, we aren't concerned about that traffic, or we say that, you know, that the sewer's issues aren't important, and we want to watch that, and, and if this does come back before us in a way that's not worked out, we'll be looking at those issues.
This is Mayor Nanda. Oh, sorry.
Um, I, I want to, um, echo and appreciate the comments from Commissioner Larson, Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Finkeldie. Um, Plan 2040 does call for us to, um, utilize infill development. And I think for us to be successful in, in utilizing infill development, we'll need to balance, uh, the interests of the development and the, uh, existing neighbors. It's important for us to, uh, provide guidance and, and direction. I think that's what we're doing tonight. Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda. Do we have a motion then?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldie. I would move approval of the rezoning request of Z2065 of approximately 1.8 acres from UKU District to RM32 District located at 1621 West Ninth Street. Um, and adopt on first reading ordinance number 9767.
This is Mayor Nanda. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Bowley, second.
Mayor Nanda, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Finkeldie, second from Commissioner Bowley. Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Aye.
Mr. Bowley?
Aye.
Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Shipley?
Nay.
Commissioner, Mayor Nanda, um, aye as well. That passes four to one with Commissioner Shipley voting against. Um, I am going to request that we now take a 10-minute break, and then we will come back for agenda item number eight. Thank you all, and thank you for your presentations. Thank you all, and thank you for your presentations.
Hey, Mackenzie was asking, so for public comment, I mean, one way to get to the public comment is to look at the entire agenda packet. And Bobby's inserted whatever comments. Is there a packet of general comment that's available outside, or is that something that Bobby links on her notice, like for updates?
Wait, say that again.
So Mackenzie was trying to go through our agenda, and she couldn't find public comment. So I sent her a note through Twitter saying, if you go to the entire agenda packet, instead of just the agenda at the top?
We don't consolidate them. Is that what you mean? They're just linked to that item?
So you really have to go through and figure out, is there a public comment on this item, and it would be part of that packet?
Right.
Okay.
It is part of the packet.
Then Melinda sent her a link, but I think--
We'll start heading back, and we'll start up at 7:34.
The link was tied to, like, I think when she does an update, sometimes she'll include correspondence.
Right, because we've received it.
Right.
You know.
After, but that's why I wanted to be careful. That's not comprehensive. That's the most recent. Okay, good, I was right. I just want to make sure.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, me too.
It'll just say correspondence on that item. Let me--
Kurt, you ready in one minute?
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and come back. Here in just a second, we'll take a roll call. Go ahead and get started with that. Commissioner Bulley?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Shipley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Finkledie?
Here.
All right, we are all back. Mayor Hernandez here. We are ready now for Agenda Item Number 3. Consider adopting Resolution 7323, establishing temporary rules and regulations suspending and amending certain provisions of Chapter 20 of the City Code pertaining to the Regulation of Land Development, including commercial districts, licensed premises, accessory restaurants, and accessory bars in Chapter 6, Article 12 of the City Code pertaining to the Regulation of Sidewalk Dining, and initiate a text amendment that will allow staff to explore permanent changes. Who do we have for this item?
Good evening, Commissioners. Amy Miller, interim PDS Director. Since the mayor did such a wonderful job reading that mouthful, I won't reiterate that. But this item for consideration arises from a request from a downtown business, Sunflower Outdoor and Bike Shop, to incorporate food and alcohol sales into their existing retail establishment. A letter from the business owner describing the proposed business concept was attached in your packet. The resolution responds to the changing retail market and is also a response in creating flexibility for businesses in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. There are two basic parts to the proposed changes. The first creates more flexibility with alcohol sales and their associated food sales requirement in the downtown commercial district. And the second creates flexibility with the combination of uses across multiple commercial districts, not just in the downtown area. For the first part of the proposed changes, the land development code and associated sidewalk plans only allow alcohol sales in the downtown commercial district if the business derives more than 55% of their total sales from food. The proposed resolution would flip that by allowing alcohol sales if the business does not derive more than 45% of the total sales from alcohol, and would not require the remainder of the sales to be derived from food. The original intent of this code provision was to not permit new establishments to be predominantly focused on alcohol sales. The intent is maintained with these temporary regulations proposed in the resolution. The resolution also amends the same code provision that is contained in the sidewalk dining ordinance. The second part of the changes in the resolution amends the land development code to allow greater flexibility with the combinations of uses by amending the definitions for accessory restaurants, accessory bars, and allowing accessory bars to be accessory to uses other than those associated with food sales. It would also allow accessory restaurants to locate more commercial districts across the city by expanding their use to the larger commercial areas in addition to being allowed in the downtown area. The resolution would be in effect until the end of June 2021, and the initiation of a text amendment would allow for the study of the effect of the temporary changes allowed under the resolution and determination of what permanent changes may be recommended moving forward. I know that Dan Hughes with Sunflower Outdoor and Bike Shop is here tonight. In addition to submitting the letter that's in your packet, he may wish to say a few words, and I'd also be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor Hernandez, thank you, Amy. Do we want to go ahead and hear from Dan, and then have questions from Commissioners? Okay, let's go ahead and hear from Dan. You're muted.
Sorry, can everybody hear me okay now?
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm new to this Zoom thing. So, yeah, as Amy said, my name is Dan Hughes with the Sunflower Outdoor and Bike Shop. And you probably all hopefully got a chance to read my overly verbose letter in the packet, so I'll try to keep it short here. But we have basically been an experience-based retailer in downtown Lawrence for 50 years. And when I say experience-based, I mean, we've been selling rides along the River Trail, hikes in the woods, and paddling trips on our local waterways. And that we do it by selling bikes and boats and boots is just a means to an end. And as retailers, our business is constantly evolving, and even before the recent pandemic, we were thinking about ways to improve our services to the northeast outdoor community. I will say that in the 30 years that I've been at Sunflower and the 20 years that I've been an owner, downtown retail is tougher than ever. It was tough before the pandemic, and it's even more so now. So our proposal is one of many avenues we're pursuing. And although it was in the works before COVID-19, recent events have meant that we needed to move more quickly. So our proposal is neither a bar nor a restaurant. I kind of feel like downtown already has a wealth of bars and restaurants. But our proposal is instead sort of an adventurer's club. I think that was a phrase that Sally Zagory with DLI coined. But I think of it as a launching pad and a landing pad for outdoor adventures. So we aim to be a retailer with a small food and drink component, not a bar/restaurant with a retail kiosk. The vast majority of what we will do will remain retail. We just want to provide a space for outdoorsy folks to share their stoke for the outdoors, much in the same way that they do already in our space, just with the opportunity to sell them a coffee sandwich or a beer to wash down the trail dust. So this would be a new idea for Lawrence, but it's not unique nationally. There are other bike and outdoor stores that are blending these experiences to create something that you can't buy on the internet. So our challenge is the, obviously, the accessory kitchen portion of the code, but also the 55-45 requirement, where if we want to sell a single beer, we have to have 55% of our gross receipts be food, and then bikes and boats and boots and that beer all get smashed into the 45%. And that's just, we can't do it that way. So it's an interesting challenge, and I think that original ordinance was obviously written so that downtown Lawrence didn't become the next Aggieville or the next Westport or another Power and Light District. And I would echo that. I don't want that for downtown because, for a host of reasons, but one of those reasons is that there aren't any retailers in the Power and Light District. So as a retailer, I would like to stick around, and having this tool would be part of that. So that's the basic gist of what we're talking about. I would say that I have to give a huge shout out to the city staff in developing this idea, especially in the current climate. They were super instrumental in helping us navigate the nuances of the City Code and proposing temporary and experimental changes that would allow us to act quickly. And acting quickly is paramount to our initiative. That said, we would look forward to working with the city to gather data and explore what's possible and prudent for Lawrence and what ultimately ends up either in the downtown master plan or in a text amendment at some point. But timeliness is of the essence. So that's all I really have to add. I would say thanks for letting us get this in front of you tonight, and I'm able to answer questions or provide more details.
Mayor Hernandez, thank you. Are there any questions from Commissioners for staff or Mr. Hughes?
This is Vice Mayor Finkledie. This is for staff. Amy, can you give me an example of the last part of the amendment, the accessory restaurant? Allow them in larger commercial districts? What would be an example of that?
Amy Miller, interim PDS Director. I'm double-checking on which commercial districts we added those to. Give me just a minute. So accessory restaurants were not permitted in downtown commercial, community commercial, strip commercial, or the regional commercial. So our CC, CD, CS, or our CR districts. And so we opened that up to allow accessory restaurants, if they fit the definition, to be located in those districts.
So this is Vice Mayor Finkledie. So like in Dan's example, but a retail shop in a different location, having an accessory restaurant inside of it. I don't know. Does Nebraska-Fernandamore, does somebody have a big restaurant in there, or something like that?
Amy Miller, Assistant PDS Director. So the second, so another part of this is we also amended the definition for accessory restaurant. And yes, that would enable a retailer to potentially have an accessory restaurant.
Thank you.
Commissioner Larson here. Amy, I just had a quick question. So this is just for new businesses coming in, or is this for everybody along Mass Street? And how does this benefit, like, if it's just a bar only, and that's all it serves is alcohol and no food? Is there any advantage that this will have for them?
Amy Miller, interim PDS Director. So it would apply in the downtown commercial district as a whole, not just specific to an individual property. And a lot of the, you'll hear us when we turn licensed premise. That's what the code uses for somebody who sells alcohol. For somebody that's traditionally a bar that has no other sales associated with it, the majority of those are what we call grandfathered licensed premises, and they were given certain rights before the 55% food sales requirement was enacted. And so they are allowed to remain. I'm not quite sure that this would give them any different advantage than what they have today. But it would allow other places that typically couldn't meet the 55% food sale, but would not have more than 45% alcohol sales, it would allow them to operate under a different model.
Okay. Commissioner Larson here. Has there been consideration given to just getting rid of the 55% for now completely versus switching it to 45?
Amy Miller, interim PDS Director. I think in looking at this, we really have only been looking at this for a couple weeks at the moment, when we were first presented with Dan's conundrum. And I think that that was a little too far of a stretch in staff's mind to completely abandon the idea of the 55%, 45%. And this temporary resolution would enable us to take a look at the effects of it. It would allow the downtown master plan to be completed and would give us the opportunity to look at it in a broader scale and on a more permanent basis.
Commissioner Larson here. So this is a temporary, I think, what, to the end of June or something like that? Is that correct?
Amy Miller, interim PDS Director. That is correct. It goes until the end of June 2021.
So Commissioner Larson here. So if it's that temporary, I mean, there's really not going to be time to wait for the downtown master plan to make some changes so that businesses can kind of be on an even foot. Is there consideration for doing other things for downtown, as well as businesses as a whole to change the, basically, the dynamic of how we do business now, to modifying it to be more amenable to the situation we have with the COVID?
Amy Miller, interim PDS Director. I, along with a bunch of other city staff, has been meeting with Downtown Lawrence Incorporated. I think Sally's on the call tonight. We have been looking at some other changes to try and be able to accommodate businesses in the downtown area in light of the COVID pandemic. And we are still studying those and looking at them, but we are actively pursuing those.
Commissioner Larson here. Do you think that that's going to be something that's going to come before us very soon? Or is this going to take some time to? I know it's, your plate is full, but, you know, these businesses are in a situation where it's a dire need, and it seems like we do need to make some changes, if possible.
Amy Miller, interim PDS Director. We just had another meeting yesterday. I would expect that, yes, you would see some changes relatively soon. Soon is a little relative at the moment. We're working as fast as we can to try and develop those and make sure that they're good, safe options, but also allow businesses some flexibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bulley. So you think that you'll have about a year's worth of data at the point that this expires, and you'll be able to actually have a better idea of how it's worked?
Amy Miller, interim PDS Director. That is correct. That was the idea with this temporary resolution that's in front of you, was to give us a good chunk of data that we can study and we can look at. And hopefully, even after six months, we'll be able to really start getting into the nitty gritty and trying to look at what some permanent changes and things like that might mean.
Mayor? Commissioner Shipley? How did you arrive at the 45% as opposed to a lower number?
Amy Miller, interim PDS-- Amy Miller, interim PDS director. In looking at the regulations that were in place and why they were put in place, and in light of the fact that we're doing this under a resolution that just temporarily amends and suspends certain provisions of the code, we were looking at one of the simplest options. And by just flipping the 55, by flipping it to the 45, no more than 45% alcohol sales, that seemed to be simpler. We didn't have a lot of data to go on as to business models and how much food sales they may generate in order to try to adjust that food sales percentage.
Commissioner Shipley. Is it the food sales that's more important in the context of the 55% or the alcohol sales? So if I'm being unclear, I probably am. To me, if a business sells kayaks, the overwhelming majority of whatever they sell, the lower number should be alcohol. So you know, if 45 just seems like a high threshold there, of course, you're going, you have Bike and Beer Wednesdays and all these great things, that it seems like you may only come in the 20% or 25% range as something that like augments what's going on as opposed to like 45% still almost half.
Can I interject there for a second? Sorry, I don't know if that's out of line.
That's up to the mayor.
And you, Sunflower Outdoor and Bike Shop.
You may.
Thank you. I would agree with Amy that the flipping of the 55-45 is the quickest and cleanest option at the moment. But as a downtown business owner for 30 years, I could see us coming to a text amendment or something down the road that has a much lower percentage. I mean, I'll be honest and say that if it stays at 45%, that would allow a large retailer to sell a lot of booze. And I don't think that's the intent. So I think the expediency of our request is valid, but I would push hard down the road to, if it becomes a permanent thing, to adjust those percentages in line with what the data is showing and what's prudent for downtown. Because I don't, we don't want to be a bar with a retail problem. We want to be a retailer that sells the occasional beer. And I think that's the spirit of what downtown really needs. So for the short term, it clears the hurdles and allows us to act quickly and be able to execute on our vision. But I would fully expect that down the road, it's a smaller percentage. And I think that's what the DLI letter of support even said. Maybe Sally can speak to that.
This is Mayor Nanda. I think that for now, that's sufficient, if that feels sufficient to Commissioner Shipley as far as moving forward in our conversation.
Can I ask another question, Mayor? Whenever you're ready. The data that you're talking about, I'm sorry, this is for Amy. Sorry, this is still Commissioner Shipley. The data you're collecting, how do you propose to collect that? What's your metric? What are your comparisons? What are we going to be looking for in that year's worth of an experiment?
Amy Miller, interim PDS director. So I should also back up a little bit. Also, in flipping that 55% and 45%, there's a code requirement to track that. It's tracked through their alcohol license in the city clerk's office. We were also taking that into consideration in just flipping that because it would basically be submitting the same information, and there would be measurable ways to track that that would not be subjective. So that was the easiest way we could think of to do that. It would be very difficult to try to require a business to separate food sales from, say, retail sales when they're filed under the same state forms in aggregate. So in order of, in looking at that data, you know, typically, when we're looking at a permanent change to code, we're going out and we're doing community engagement. We're talking to the retailers. We're talking to the restaurant owners, the business owners. We're talking to the community. And I think that some of that data gathering is where we get into the community engagement. I think that we can ask all of those great questions. How much food sales are you selling right now? And we can probably do some sort of anonymous poll. But in terms of metrics, there isn't a way to split that out in terms of sales tax reports or excise tax reports that are submitted to the state. We'd be relying on the businesses to split that for us.
This is Mayor Nanda. I had a quick question about the impact on liquor licenses as far as processing those. We know expediency is necessary right now, and I know that those have to be processed, and information has to be gathered, et cetera. Is there any significant? What is the impact of that piece of things?
Mayor, this is Sherry Redeman, city clerk. Are you asking if this would have additional reporting and sort of additional burden on the licensee? I guess I'm not clear exactly what you're asking. I'm sorry.
That's fair. This is Mayor Nanda again. I think that, you know, there's potential that a lot of retailers may be very interested in this opportunity, and that will put, you know, more applications in front of staff, and staff are going to need to process those, and we need to be moving as quickly as possible right now because of the nature of the temporary order, et cetera. And so I'm just curious if you've thought through or had conversations about what the potential impact will be.
Sherry Redeman, city clerk. Yes, that is something that was essentially my primary comment when we were discussing this, is this could greatly increase the liquor licensing because this really opens that up for a lot more businesses to do. But we're prepared to handle those. And it will be, and you know, we'll have a bigger license memo on your commission meetings each week potentially. But we're definitely prepared to handle that. And the liquor reporting will really, that will still primarily just impact the downtown area. I'm correct on that, Amy, right? The 45, yeah. And I will say that that, you know, the initial intent was that the majority of your sales for restaurants was 55% food, 45% alcohol. This just opens that up to where you're still at 45% alcohol, but it includes all retail sales. So it doesn't just have to be food. It could be whether it's, you know, bikes or whether it's a painting class, or it just opens that potential up for more businesses, so. But we're prepared for the impact. We really, it's really difficult to know exactly how many businesses will take advantage of this.
This is Mayor Nanda, thank you.
That's not a great question, a great answer, but.
Are there other questions from commissioners?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldey. Sherry, you just said something there that I hadn't really thought through. Is it any sales? I mean, for example, if you were a video arcade, and you weren't selling anything, you were just selling tokens or something, would that qualify? Then you could also sell a few beers on the side of the, or if you were a skating rink, for example. Could you do that? Or was it actually a retail sale? I hadn't thought that through.
I mean, it's not a.
Can I interrupt real quick and say, I hope that you have rumors that there's a skating rink coming to Lawrence? Sorry.
Sherry Redeman, city clerk. This will be a tag-team answer with Amy because there are a couple of things that play in here. And I can comment on the liquor licensing, but then you also have to look at the definitions of the accessory bar and restaurant. So in terms of sales, it would be your gross receipts compared to your liquor sales. That's what's reported on a liquor excise tax return, and that is what we would track for the businesses downtown. So Amy maybe can jump in here on how that impacts those definitions for accessory bar.
Amy Miller, interim PDS director. This is where we get into some pretty nitty gritty here in what we're changing in the code. And there are definitely two parts to it. There's not just that 55%, 45%, but also this resolution will change where an accessory bar can be located, what business an accessory bar could be located accessory to. And so the resolution expands those offerings and allows an accessory bar to be accessory to quality restaurant, participant sports and recreation indoor, which could encompass some of those entertainment uses, personal convenience services, personal improvement services, and then the majority of our retail establishments, which there's multiple code uses for those. So yes, it does expand that and allow it.
Vice Mayor Finkeldey, thank you. I think that's a important, as we think about downtown Lawrence master plan and the downtown master plan and the idea of experiential activities, but also, because, you know, again, as Mayor Nanda said, a skating rink somewhere else in town. I mean, I could see how having this as a consideration, as a possibility, would be something that could make those activities a little more economic or cash flow in a certain way. So I think that's a good development. Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda. Any other questions? I did want to make sure, and I've read through, you know, the accessory uses that are allowed. I wanted to check and see how this applies to grocery stores or whether it does.
Amy Miller, interim PDS director. Give me just a minute. True grocery stores in our code are defined as food and beverage sales, and so that would not be allowed to have an accessory bar. However, you know, you've seen some stores that have a model where they're not just a grocery store, but they have predominant retail sales, not just food and beverage. And there is the possibility with some of those, but not all of them. It would depend on their size, square footage, as to whether they would be allowed.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. Mayor, please.
Commissioner Shipley. I'm glad you mentioned square footage. I wasn't going to ask, but since you brought it up, that was something I was thinking about before I went back and read the old code or what the code is now. And this kind of goes to what the applicant was saying. He wants to be a retailer who has a little beer and not the other way around. And I wondered, you know, if I walk into an establishment and it's the entire place full of tables, then I'm definitely going to get the impression they're selling more than 45%. So yeah, could you talk more about the square footage?
Amy Miller, interim PDS director. The square footage I was referring to would just be in terms of what type of classification that retail establishment is. It really only comes into play when you're talking about stores over 50,000 or 100,000 square feet. So the model that Sunflower Outdoor and Bike is following wouldn't really be in that classification. But the sales are tracked on, with that 55%, 45%, they're tracked on the actual sales dollars. So not based on square footage.
Mayor Nanda, any other questions from commissioners? All right. We did not have any public comment on this item. So if there's no further discussion, we're ready for a motion if one wishes to make one.
Vice Mayor Finkeldey. I'd move for approval of resolution number 7323, establishing temporary rules and regulations, suspending and amending certain provisions of Chapter 20 of the city code pertaining to the regulation of land development, including commercial districts, licensed premise accessory restaurants, and accessory bars, and Chapter 6, Article 12 of the city code pertaining to the regulation of sidewalk dining, and to initiating a text amendment that will allow staff to explore permanent changes.
Commissioner Larson, second.
This is Mayor Nanda. We had a motion from Vice Mayor Finkeldey, a second from Commissioner Larson. Vice Mayor Finkeldey?
Aye.
Mayor Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you all for your presentations. We are ready to move on to item four on our agenda, consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement, release, and waiver of claims with Gregory C. Burns, Jr.
Tony Wheeler, city attorney. I'll be presenting this item this evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Police Chief Greg Burns has decided to leave the city's employment to pursue other opportunities. An agreement that sets forth certain terms and conditions related to his departure from the city is on your agenda for consideration. Staff recommends that the commission proceed with the agreement as drafted and requests that you authorize the city manager to execute an agreement, release, and waiver of claims with Gregory C. Burns, Jr. That's all I have. Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda. Are there any questions from any commissioners on this item?
Yeah, Commissioner Larson. Tony, could you go over the specifics of the agreement as far as the numbers and so forth? I would appreciate it.
The separation date and resignation provides that Chief Burns will resign from his employment with the city effective June 12th. There will be a separation payment in which the city agrees to pay Burns a single lump sum payment equal to nine months of his current rate of pay, which equals $106,805.25. Let's see. Chief Burns will utilize up to 144 hours of vacation leave between May 18th and June 11th. And during this period, Burns will be available for telephone calls and other remote communications to help with the transition of his employment from the city. There is a provision that allows for a payment of up to $10,000 if Chief Burns attempts to sell his current residential property and suffers a loss. And there is a provision that allows for the city to verify certain facts related to that transaction. There's also a moving expenses in the amount of $10,000 less applicable taxes, deductions, and withholdings to help with his moving, and that is reimbursed based on actual receipts. A release and waiver of claims that the city would get in exchange for the benefits that we are providing under this agreement. And there is also a provision that relates to a non-disparagement. So there's an agreed-upon statement in Exhibit A to the agreement that if there are questions regarding the end of this relationship, we will stick to the agreed-upon statement. There is a provision that allows that the city will provide a positive letter of reference that will be provided by the city manager. And there are other provisions, standard provisions.
Mayor Nanda, thank you, Porter. So at this point, it is back up to the commission. We can have more discussion, or we can make a motion.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldey. I'd make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement and release and waiver of claims with Gregory C. Burns, Jr.
This is Commissioner Bowley, I second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Finkeldey, a second from Commissioner Bowley. Vice Mayor Finkeldey?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That passes unanimously. We are ready to move on to our commission items. Do we have any future agenda items to add? Future work session items?
Mayor, this is Commissioner Bowley. There was an article in the Lawrence Journal World by a professor at Friends University in Wichita on May 16th. The professor is Russell Arben Fox. And there was part of it that really, I thought the entire article was very worthwhile, but I'll just read a little piece of the last part of it. It says, "As Kansas attempts to rebuild a new normal beyond the pandemic, thinking more seriously about home rule and the way cities, counties, and the state share governing authority should be near the top of every elected official's list." I had a chance to visit with Professor Fox yesterday, and I would like to suggest that we consider inviting him to participate in a work session item to essentially present the points of his article and expand on them a little bit for our benefit.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you, Commissioner Bowley. Does he have any published work or information that commissioners could review as we think about your proposal?
He's been at Friends, I believe, for 15 years. And, you know, I'll throw this out if you'd like to think about it, and we can talk about it again at our next meeting. I recommend the article to everybody, and I think it's, you know, as we go into our budget season, you know, I think being informed about these relationships and how we can make them work well is very significant.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you. Other thoughts from commissioners on that item?
Commissioner Larson, I would be interested in hearing more from him. I read the article, and it is fascinating.
I guess I would suggest that we all have a chance to read the article and review Professor Fox's work, and I'll bring this back at our next meeting.
Mayor Nanda, thank you, Commissioner Bowley. I appreciate that. And thanks for bringing that to us. I think that it's nice to hear from a multitude of voices, and I appreciate you bringing it. Any other future work session items? Other items? You can still take the census, so I will still reiterate that. And I'm appreciative of everybody who, as we've opened up this week, has done the best through their businesses, through their personal behaviors, to do what they need to do to feel safe, to take care of each other, making their choices as far as social distancing, wearing masks. And I'm so proud to see so many people out there doing best practices and really caring about the safety of our community. Anything else? All right. We are ready for the city managers' report.
Good evening. This is Craig Owens, city manager. We've got three items that we reported to you. Our utility billing report, which looks a little unusual because of the way our operations have been impacted, but the other items are an economic development strategic plan. This is something I think is going to be so important coming out of the economic downturn and to help us as a community identify our trajectory. So we're excited to get that out there and work with our partners, the chamber, of course, and the county, on those conversations. And although it's going to be on a rapid pace for the first pieces of that, this will be a continuing process of how we map our future and our economic development strategies together. So we're excited to have that, the RFP out on the street on that. And then the last item is just an update on what we're scheduling for all of you as far as our work ahead. Be happy to answer any questions on any of these three items.
This is Mayor Nanda. Any questions for Craig?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldein. It's not really a question. I almost brought this up under other items, but since Craig was the star of the video, I thought I'd save it here. I appreciate the video that came out, and I see Porter and his team put that together, but it was a very good video about the work of the city and highlighted the work of our employees. And certainly, we appreciate their work and everything they did, and I thought that was a great video, and you were kind of the star of it there at the beginning and the end. But our other employees were stars as well, so I appreciate that being put together and put out there.
Thanks.
This is Mayor Nanda. I also appreciate, you know, the schedule that you put on the items. They're ready. They're in front of us, and we can be ready to move on those with some dates that are further out for some of those things, but I appreciate that. Any questions for Craig? Okay. Thank you, Craig. We are ready to move on to the calendar, or, sorry, yeah, the calendar. Anything to add? I see the land meetings are on there. Okay. Are we ready to adjourn?
I move that, Commissioner Larson here, I move that we adjourn.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein, second.
This is Mayor Nanda. We have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Vice Mayor Finkeldein. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, that passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you all, and we will see you in June.